...of the Mayor's Award. Gosh, I don't know how many years we've been doing this, but it is... Man, would you take a seat? That's my sister. We've been doing this for, I guess, maybe eight, 10 years, I guess, and it's been one of the things that I enjoy the most, being mayor, is to recognize folks that are involved in our schools. And the way this works, if you don't know, is that it's not me, it's not the council. The principal actually picks the student, the teacher, and a volunteer. So it's all on them, whoever they pick. We just read the names, have a nice certificate, got a $100 gift card from Macy's, a $200 gift card from Costco. He not getting any gift cards like that. So I do want to recognize Superintendent Chris Ragsdale's here. Chris, thank you so much for coming. Grant back there? Grant, that's you. How's it going? Where's that other list? I know Susan Thayer's here. I don't know if Kevin Daniel's here. Is there any other big-money staff person here? Robin? What about Dr. Belinda Walters of Brazil? Robin's here, so that's all that matters. So, thank y'all very much. We've got some council members here, and we changed this to 5:30 because now our council meeting starts at 7:00. And we've pushed it to the limit. Derek Norton is here. He's one of our new council members. This is his first Mayor's Award. Doug Stoner, he's a new council member, and it's his first Mayor's Award, although he's living in Smyrna all his life. And Corky Welch is here. Somewhere in traffic, he's probably... What did I do? I could've done worse than that. Terry Nola, which I know is on the way, not sure about the remaining council members, but being 5:30, it sort of pushes us sometimes. Hope everybody enjoyed the reception. It'll be put on your water bill next month. It gets funnier as I'm going to recognize the school first, and they will come down. And I guess I'll do it in alphabetical order because Mr. Baba Louie, as I call him, is up front. Argyle Elementary. Robert Baba Louie's the principal, and he's going to recognize his folks, and we'll go from there.
I'd like to start by thanking Mayor Bacon and council for taking time to acknowledge these outstanding individuals. I'm proud to recognize the following recipients of this semester's Mayor's Education Awards from Argyle Elementary. First, 5th grade student Alexander Mohica. Alexander has been described by his teacher, Ms. Gadson, as respectful, kind, and thoughtful. He's taken a leadership role in his class by patiently helping others while always maintaining superior grades of his own. Previous teachers have described Alexander in virtually the same way: helpful to others, hard-working, and always having a positive attitude. As a past member of the school's safety patrol, Alexander has had an excellent and been an excellent role model for all of our students. He's also active in ensemble, Boy Scouts, and anchors the morning news show. In his free time, Alexander likes to play soccer. After completing high school, Alexander would like to become an auto mechanic. Congratulations. Next, I'm proud to recognize our 2017 Classified Employee of the Year and Head of Argyle's Custodial Team, Lisa Lewis. Hard-working, patient, kind, and committed are just a few words that describe Lisa. For the past 24 years, she's worked tirelessly to make sure Argyle's facilities are clean, attractive, and safe for the students and teachers. Lisa's a great example of what it means to be a team player, whether it's making popcorn for the students, staying late to clean up an event, or just taking the time to talk with a student that's had a bad day. Lisa's always there, willing to lend a hand. Congratulations and thank you for all you do. Finally, I would like to acknowledge Argyle's volunteer and parent liaison, Ms. Zoila Hill. Zoila came to Argyle two years ago and made an immediate impact on engaging the school's families in education. Ms. Hill has turned her office into a classroom for many of our parents. Whether it's teaching English classes, basic computer skills classes, or helping parents build a resume, Zoila is there, ready to help. She's a member of the school council, PTA, and helped to organize Argyle's first international night, an event designed to celebrate the diversity in our school. Argyle is very lucky to have Zoila Hill as part of our team. Congratulations.
Excellent. Is anybody else hot besides me? Well, I thought it was just my weight. It's just I've got thyroid problems. Cut the air on somebody up there. Okay. Next is... And I'm going to give Chris Ragsdale a chance if he wants to say something whenever you feel like walking up here. Belmont Hills Elementary, Bertha Nelson. No, he'll come up here whenever I get in the sign. Oh, yeah, I said, cut the lights, cut those French fry lights on. That'll cool us off. That's all I need. You're going to get a tan now. Are you hot?
A little bit. No, that's good. Well, the recipients from Belmont Hills, please come on up. We're going to start with this gentleman right here. Our student recipient has been at Belmont Hills since kindergarten. Throughout his time here, he has shown dedication to academics as well as being a leader in our school and our community. In the classroom, he is thoughtful and an active participant. He works well with others and consistently takes a leadership role. He is always looking for ways to improve and is not afraid to ask for help or to offer help to those who need it. His caring and motivated personality makes him a great role model for his peers. His achievements extend beyond the classroom as well. He's a news anchor for the school news, a participant in the Science Olympiad team, and is a successful and passionate baseball player. I proudly present Daniel Jackson with the Students' Mayor's Award. Ms. Miller, she's retiring this. She's leaving me. Our teacher recipient has been a part of Belmont Hills for 15 years and is such an instrumental part of our school. She currently is our target and gifted teacher, and as if that wasn't enough, she researched and started an engineering lab as well as part of her regular schedule for the general ed students. She oversees our STEM program and has been instrumental in getting that started and operational as well. I can truly say that she is the most knowledgeable, helpful, compassionate, and hard-working individual that I've ever had the privilege of working with. One of her coworkers described her best in these three statements. Ms. Miller is integrity first, service before self, and excellent in all she does. She's retiring this year, like I said, and we're truly going to miss you. Ms. Miller, it gives me great pleasure to present you with the Mayor's Award. All right, here we go. Winston Churchill once said, "You make a living by what you get, but you make a life by what you give." Our volunteer exemplifies that statement. At Belmont Hills, we have the great fortune of having Mr. Alan Potter as one of our volunteers. He is service-minded, giving of himself, reliable and loving. Alan, or Mr. Potter, as he's known around Belmont, has been a part of our school for over a decade as a classroom reader and mentor. The students think that he's a celebrity because he comes in to see them on a weekly basis to read. When Mr. Potter reads to them, and he reads to kindergarten, mind you, there is no movement in the classroom. And they can sit there for 30 or 40 minutes listening to him, and the teachers are just amazed at how he can embellishes them with his reading abilities. When we asked the teachers that he works with to describe him, they had a number of responses, but this was my favorite. "Mr. Potter is like Fox 5 News. He's determined, dependable, and dedicated." So, Mr. Potter, we love you and appreciate everything that you do, and we present you with the Mayor's Award.
That's actually Harry Potter's great-grandfather. I'm not lying. And he was there the day Winston Churchill said that, made that statement. Alan Potter's a good old Smyrna people. Green Acres Elementary, Angela White, principal. How's it going, Angela?
Hey, it's going great. Going great. Ms. Quayar, Ms. Brandon, and Jordan. Good evening, everyone. I'm Ronald Crawford, Assistant Principal at Green Acres Elementary. At this time, we would like to honor our Mayor's Award recipients. This evening, we have Mr. Jordan Garvin. Jordan is a 4th grader at Green Acres. Couple of things I want to say about Jordan, and I just want you to understand this and know this, and everyone, that your past doesn't define you, it prepares you. And that's one of the things I can say about Jordan. Jordan had started the year off and started making some decisions that really weren't in his best interest, but one of the things I can say about Jordan is that he's turned his school year around. Jordan is an integral part of our character club. He's also on our track club, and he's done a phenomenal job, really committing himself to improving himself and also in education, and just becoming an overall outstanding young man, and we're so proud of him. So at this time, please, I'd like to recognize you, Jordan Garvin, for your accomplishments for the Mayor's Award. Mrs. Mamie Brandon, I don't know where to start with Mamie. Mamie is our cafeteria director, manager at Green Acres, queen of all things. She's received, or our team has received, several district-wide awards for their excellence. And also Mamie is someone that everyone in the school just doesn't know her is working in our cafeteria. Everyone knows her because she's all over the school. And what I mean by that is that she sees her role in feeding our children as it's just as important as what the teachers do in the classroom. And she's a leader in every sense, and we appreciate everything that she does on a daily basis. Ms. Tanya Quayar. Ms. Quayar does so much. One of our parents does so much for our school. She's very active in our school council. Whenever we call Ms. Quayar, she's always there. We see her every day, every day when her children are walking home. She's there on time, ready to do whatever we need her to do, but she's also willing to contribute. Just a great volunteer, a great person to have on our team at Green Acres. Ms. Tanya Quayar, thank you so much.
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Cafeteria, my best class when I was in school. Was nothing better than them bringing a big old sheet of rolls right when you were next in line. The worst thing was getting that last roll off the other one. King Springs Elementary, Linda Keeney, principal.
He used to always have something to say when I would come up here with something in my hand about how long it was going to be. So I'm winging this, Max. This could be good, or it could go, you know, not so good if I decided to get on a tear. I'm going to start with this precious little pile of energy that stands beside me. She packs a powerful punch. She may be small. This is Reese Fabrechius, and she is one of our outstanding students at King Springs Elementary. She's been with me since she was in kindergarten, and she's a straight A student. She also is on our robotics team. She is president of our beta club this year. And you are... Forgot the other... Oh, she's on Girls on the Run. How fast do you run? What'd you make it in the last race?
33.
33. I could've made it in 63. Anyway, this is an outstanding child. These parents must be doing something right because I believe your sister received the Mayor's Award one time when she was at King Springs. The only thing this child has ever done wrong is that occasionally she wears a really tacky t-shirt that says, "Go University of Tennessee." But her dad, to try to forgive her for that, came tonight in a red shirt, I see, and a black jacket. Go Dogs! Reese is a great child, and I'm very glad to give her this Mayor's Award. Congratulations, sweetie.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I didn't know whether this lady was going to come and speak to me. Is your arm broken? We've broken her child's arm twice in the last two months. How many?
Three months.
Three months. First, she broke her elbow, and they just got that out of the cast. And then she was on the monkey bars the other day, and she fell. And her teacher said when she fell, she watched herself going in slow motion to stop it, that Claire jumped up and said, "It's broken, it's broken, I know it's broken, I know it's broken." And you were in London.
Yes.
So we're sorry, Claire, but your mom still does a great job. And I thank you for coming and speaking to me after we've broken your child's arm. This is Nicola Fuller, and she is president, she's our volunteer, and she is president of our foundation. And under her leadership, our foundation has grown in leaps and bounds. Can you give me a total of what you think we've earned this year?
$76,000.
$76,000 for our foundation. And that's all due to Nicola's involvement in the foundation, her organization, and we really don't know what we'd do without her. So if we promise not to break Claire's arm anymore, will you stay with us for a while?
Another year until she graduates.
Until she graduates. So congratulations to Nicola Fuller. And this young lady is going to get to be very lucky this year. This is Teresa Camp. She has been, what I call at King Springs, a jack-of-all-trades. She's taught 3rd grade, she's taught gifted, she's taught ESOL, she's been in the computer lab, she's been an EIP teacher. Anything else? Any other grades? Did you teach kindergarten one time? No?
I did, but not at King Springs.
Not at King Springs. So she's retiring this year, and one of the reasons that she's retiring is she's got 11...
Nine.
Nine grandchildren, one more on the way, and that daughter, it's her seventh child. So Teresa is going to take some time to spend with those grandchildren, and I'm envious of her, and she's retiring, and we won't know what to do without being able to say, "Where's Ms. Camp?" We can ask her that question. So congratulations to Teresa Camp.
You can kiss them monkey bars goodbye. They'll be gone tomorrow. Way to go, principal. Get those monkey bars out of there just a moment. Seriously, they... When I'm talking, do not hand me a note because I forgot what I... Oh, there are some gift certificates in each of the awards. There's 100 pounds of barbecue pork from Jimmy Nick's, is that right? And 1,000 chicken fingers from Zaxby. And Six Flags passes for life. Nikka Jack Elementary, right? I saw Beverly Lloyd with a fan. That's the first indication I had. It might be a little hot. Is that true?
Yes, that's correct.
You can announce that.
Okay.
Because you don't get any more time. Oh, here, here.
Is this fine? Okay. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity. And I would like for Nikka Jack's nominees to come on up. And while they're coming up, I just want to let you know that Nikka Jack sent a team to adventure competition at Georgia Tech, and that team will be going to Washington, DC. So we're really proud of them. Yeah, really proud. Okay. So this is Bay Wilson. She is a 5th grade student at Nikka Jack and has been a wonderful student for all the years that she's been with us. She is the epitome of a respectful, responsible role model, and just looking at her, you can tell that she's always positive. One of the things I really like about Bay is that she has learned very quickly how to get along with all kinds of people, and that's going to hold her well in the future as she goes into her career or profession. She knows how important it is to be very respectful of all people, to put yourself out there when it's necessary. One of the things that her teachers have said is that she is always positive, always willing to lend a helping hand, and always willing to do whatever is asked of her. So I am really, really proud of her, and I am honored to present her to you tonight. Okay. So I have a couple here, Daniel and Sarah Lee Parker. I could extol their virtues forever and ever. They have been involved in a lot of aspects in our school. They have been on school council, on PTA. Sarah Lee is currently in charge of the PTA Room Mothers. She always does a wonderful job for us when we have Teacher Appreciation Week. My teachers are so appreciative because they are taken care of each and every day, from massages to lunches to breakfast to gift cards. She does it all, and she leads that effort, and I do appreciate her for that. Her husband, Daniel, has been president of the PTA, and one of the things that everyone appreciates about Daniel is the fact that he will do anything that you need whenever you need it. Now, a few years ago, my first husband died unexpectedly, and so one of the things that I had to do, that my husband used to do, was to take care of my car. My wheels were almost flat, and so I asked Daniel, "What do I do to get the air in the tires?" And what he said was, "Just give me your keys. I will take your car, and I'll take care of it." So I really appreciate that. The other thing is during the summer, my science lab teacher has a greenhouse, and she has grass to mow, and she has pine straw and all of that kind of stuff to lay out. And anytime she asked him to do something for her as it relates to that, he just did it. He finds ways to do whatever he's asked to do. The two of them are one of the many pillars at Nikka Jack that support us, and we're really grateful for them. So it's with pleasure that I introduce them to you tonight. And last but not least, this is our staff member, Fay Yost. Fay Yost has been at Nikka Jack as long as I have been there, and I've been there for 11 years, and she was there prior to me coming. And Fay was one of the first faces that I saw when I came to Nikka Jack. She has wonderful, wonderful children that have come through our school. As a matter of fact, her son is a senior this year, and he came to Nikka Jack for the victory lap. And at one point, he was shorter than I was. Now he towers over me, and I'm really proud of her children. And so, yeah, you're still short. Anyway, Fay has been a parent volunteer. She then moved on to be a media specialist. She is our Classified Employee of the Year. She is a jack-of-all-trades. She can do it all. She can multitask. She takes care of our website. And the thing I like about her is that anytime we have a need to have something done, she always says, "I can do that. I can do that." One of the things that's going to happen for her next year is she is going to be teaching at Griffin Middle School, so we're really proud of her. Fay has been a wonderful, wonderful support for us at Nikka Jack, and I am really going to miss her, but I certainly wish her well next year. So Fay Yost. And this is my last one with you.
This is it, huh?
This is it for me.
Our last one here. You've been great at Nikka Jack. It's been wonderful down there.
Thank you.
It's time to retire it.
It is.
That's what I should do. Thank you, that. Russell Elementary. How many kids fell off your monkey bars down there? Do you have any kids fall off the monkey bars? Never mind. I guess I mean it's none.
You skipped Norton Park.
Oh, I skipped Norton Park. I sure did. I was still thinking about that lunchroom lady. Norton Park Elementary, Jeffrey Mosley is principal. Yes. What's this note say? You gonna say it?
So the note says, "Norton Park sent team to adventure competition at Georgia Tech." So we also participate in that as well, and next year, we'll be going somewhere. We're going to go. We're going to wait till next year. We're going to let them go this year. We'll go next year. With me, I have three amazing individuals. My student, Caitlin. On up to Caitlin. So I have a list of things that Caitlin has done and that she does at Norton Park, but most importantly, she is self-driven, she's focused, and no matter what happens, what barriers stand in her way, she continues to push forward. Her teacher says that she's always willing to give help and go above and beyond the expectations to not only help herself, but to help her friends. She is the epitome of what it means to be a soaring eagle at Norton Park. She represents herself and her family very well. The last thing I'll say is Caitlin is a student that we've challenged, and we've pushed, and we've pushed, and we've challenged, to the point now that we're looking at possible acceleration for her because she's just that prepared for her future. And so with that, I not only give her the credit, but to her amazing family as well. And I present to you Caitlin Mallorca. What do I say about this one right here? They're laughing. It's contagious. It's contagious. Tiffany Chiodus. Tiffany works in our front office, and she is what I will call definitely my right-hand. She's been with us for about four years now, four or five years now, and whenever I need something, I walk in and she sees I'm in like a small sprint. She looks at my face, she already knows what's going on, and she's right behind me. "I got you. I got you. What do we need to do?" More than that, when we have had to go through different changes or we have had to implement new things, she takes the bull by the horns and she makes it happen. Tiffany is someone that you can depend on. She's reliable, and without a shadow of a doubt, I would call her if my life depended on it because I know she would take care of me. So someone that I would trust my own child in is Tiffany, and for that, she's recognized today. So thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
All right, all right. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson has been with Norton Park for over 10 years. 15 years. There we go. I've been there for five. Mr. Johnson has worked as a mentor and volunteer with our students. He reads to them, he comes and he speaks with them. He gives up his time, and he's never had a child to step foot in Norton Park's doors. So we don't find that often. You know, this is bringing the community back into the school. This is making sure that we're able to equip our students with those people that are down the street, bringing the community back in so that our kids realize that your neighbor cares. I may not have a student in the school, but I still care about you and your success. Mr. Johnson brings a wealth of that to our school, and for that, we're grateful and we thank you.
Who do you know? You must announce what's going to be called you next. Russell?
I do.
Then you're better than I am. Russell Elementary, Tammy Watson, principal.
Can my representatives come up? I saw all three of them here, and I was so excited. Okay, I'm going to start with this little person here, Giselle. She's as beautiful on the inside as she is on the outside. And I can tell you what I love about Giselle. She's always looking to encourage everyone. So I ask the principal every day in the morning, I go around and ask my teachers, "How you doing?", my kids. I say, "Hey", just to see how their day is going. And so Giselle picked up, and so she looked at me and said, "Well, nobody says that to you, Ms. Watson." So every morning, she says, "How's your morning, Ms. Watson? I hope you have a great day." And so she's just the love of my life in the morning because I know she's going to do that. But I tell you, she stole my heart when I was doing an evaluation on a teacher, and the teacher was getting them to inference. So the answer's not in the passage, and so Giselle didn't know. I mean, I was literally almost in tears, and the teacher was saying, "So why do you think they love each other?" And she was like, "It's not in the passage." And she was like, "Well, I know why." She says, "Because the mom and dad want to be together, and the brother want to be together, and they're all smiling." And she says, "I don't need the word 'love' in there. I could just go from the information." I was like, "Oh, this is every principal's dream." But she is a wonderful person, and Giselle, you deserve it, and you look beautiful. But she is a wonderful person and Giselle, you deserve it and you look beautiful. All right. My next person, my volunteer. She's been trying to leave Russell for three years. So, when I found out she was trying to leave, I decided, "Let me give her a job." So, we put her in the cafeteria, which is still volunteering if you realize how much they get paid. So, she's still volunteering. Then the next year, she was like, "Well, it's time for me to leave, Ms. Watson." I said, "Let me get her another job." So, now she's crossing guard. So, and if you look at that pace, she's still volunteering. So, but no, she is awesome. And I got to find something next year, but just give me a chance. I'll get it. But she is awesome. She has two boys at Russell. She is always there. In the morning, she gets there at 7:10. She doesn't leave till 3 o'clock. She works with PTA. And if you didn't know, that we had our first adaptive field day for our special needs kids at Osborne. And guess who was there? It was Ms. Sonia Bradley. So, she is definitely a volunteer. She is, she has my heart. I love her. I love her kids. And I'm not going to let you go.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Paula, Paula, Paula. I love Paula. In fact, I need a picture of Paula because I've never seen her in anything except for a cafeteria uniform. So, I really didn't even know she had legs, but she does. So, but Paula is awesome. And what I like about Paula is our theme this year is putting the pieces together. And it's about the whole child. And Paula was so excited about that because I think sometimes we forget how important nutrition is with the child. If the child is not fed, you know, they really can't learn. And so, Paula took this and she just ran with it. And she really, as the cafeteria manager, just gets out there and do everything. They just stole my heart. She, we had a kid that was struggling one day and I just walked in the cafeteria and I saw her sitting over to the side, taking her time out just to console this kid. That's not her job as the cafeteria manager. Her job is just to feed them, get them out and come in the next day and feed them and get them out. But she truly loves the kids at Russell and she's never, ever going to leave me. I told her I have about 10 years and she has about 10 herself. So, she's going to be with me into the duration, right Paula?
I will.
Look at that. I love you, Paula.
I love you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's three lunchroom people. Smyrna Elementary, James Ward. While it's coming up, I'm going to turn this over to Terry Nellowitz. She's got a special proclamation she's going to read unless James wants to say something first.
Yeah, if you want to.
Yeah, say something first.
Say if you want.
Absolutely. I'll tell you what. We'll go ahead and have our Smyrna representatives come up. We have Priya. We have Kristi. And we have Vicky. And we also have two of our amazing Smyrna Elementary family members here, Gary and Kathy Louder. So, we'll ask them if they would come up. I'm going to go ahead and start by talking about this wonderful young lady to my right. She is here tonight. She is missing an amazing field trip to the 4H Center, an overnight camping experience and learning experience because she wanted to be here tonight. And we are very proud of Priya. She moved to our school in January from India. She very quickly designated herself as a leader among her classmates. Her teacher says that in everything she does, her decisions academically, her decisions with friendships, she always makes the right choice. And we so appreciate her and her wonderful leadership at our school. This is Priya. Ms. Vicky Masella is my right hand and my left. She's our amazing bookkeeper at Smyrna Elementary. She's a wonderful colleague and friend. She's our School Professional of the Year. She is our chief problem solver with money and ASP and anything else. Vicky is well-respected by the community and the staff and the students and we appreciate the amazing job she does every day. Vicky Masella. Ms. Kristi Williamson is our, one of our amazing parents at Smyrna Elementary. She lives in the house of yes for Smyrna Elementary. We keep her on speed dial. She always says yes. She always finds a way for whatever we need. If it's a volunteer to pack sack lunches or come give school tours or chaperone field trips or cover classes, Kristi is the one who always does that. Her husband serves as our, he was our PTA treasurer. Now, he's our foundation treasurer. And they are an amazing family and we so much appreciate all that they do for Smyrna Elementary, Ms. Kristi Williamson. These two amazing individuals right here, Kathy and Gary, they are some amazing supporters of Smyrna Elementary. They are the parents of Sarah Louder, who was our speech pathologist, who lost her battle to cancer just a couple of months ago. Gary and Kathy have for years been an amazing support to our school. And their daughter, Sarah, was just an amazing part of our community and our school family. And we're so honored to have them here tonight to receive this recognition from the city council and just know how much we love you and how much we support you and how much we appreciate you letting us have Sarah for such a long time.
Thank you, Principal Ward. And if I can take a moment, I'd like to read the proclamation by the mayor of the City of Smyrna honoring the life and service of Sarah Louder. Terry Nellowitz, by the way, represent Ward 3 here on the Smyrna City Council and that includes Smyrna Elementary School. Whereas, the City of Smyrna mourns the passing of Sarah Margaret Louder, who died on March 10th, 2016, at the age of 31, following a battle with ovarian cancer. And whereas, Sarah was a beloved member of the Smyrna community through her work at Brown Elementary School and later Smyrna Elementary School, as well as through her membership at St. Thomas the Apostle Catholic Church in Smyrna. And whereas, Sarah's devotion as a distinguished speech pathologist and as a tireless advocate for her students at Brown Elementary and Smyrna Elementary Schools was evident from the time and attention she gave every student. And whereas, Sarah received the Brown Elementary School Teacher of the Year Award in 2012 in honor of her remarkable impact on the academic community. And whereas, both Brown Elementary School and Smyrna Elementary School benefited from the unwavering support and the positive and upbeat attitude that Sarah gave to her students, their families, her coeducators and her surrounding community. And whereas, in November 2015, Sarah was diagnosed with ovarian cancer. And through her courageous battle, she inspired countless families, friends and complete strangers with her strength and grace in the face of hardship. And whereas, the elementary schools at which she taught were honored by her presence and she never let her health challenges interfere with her relationships with students, colleagues and the surrounding community. Now therefore, I am ex-bacon mayor of the City of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby recognize Sarah Louder's outstanding service, many contributions and love for her community and invite all citizens of Smyrna to reflect upon and honor her lifetime achievements and the impact she has left upon the City of Smyrna.
I couldn't have read that. Thank you, Terry, for doing that. After S is T, right? Teasley. Oh, Leslie Mansfield, principal. We, Leslie's way up here. It's okay. So, here's your.
Thank you, Mayor Bacon and council for this honor and to be able to recognize some of our amazing students and staff members. Unfortunately, my staff member, Makita Smith, who is our nurse and Classified Employee of the Year, had a conflict and was not able to be here. And my parent recipient, Amanda Marinello, is sitting in the urgent care with her daughter with 103 fever. So, I got a text from her as we were waiting that she's not going to be here. But this one is fabulous and she can just take all the glory from Teasley and she is certainly worth it. This is Dylan Clements. Dylan is a fifth grader at Teasley. She's been at Teasley since she was in kindergarten. And I'm going to read what her teacher had to say about her and you will see just how special Dylan is. She said, "Doesn't take much interaction with Dylan to realize that she is a special young lady. There's one anecdote in particular that I feel demonstrates why Dylan is deserving of the mayor's award. Dylan is extremely bright. She's a target student and excels in the area of language arts and reading. Despite her highly-developed cognitive abilities, math is a little bit of a struggle, isn't it? But it goes unnoticed because what she may not understand naturally, she overcomes with a work ethic unlike anything I've ever seen in an elementary school student. When Dylan doesn't understand something, she's willing to accept the challenge and face it head-on. She'll ask questions, try different strategies and research the concept independently until she gets a level of understanding worthy of her high standards, which are very high. While I admire Dylan's academic success, I find that the character that it displays is far more impressive. It takes grit, perseverance, discipline and enthusiasm for learning to be able to do what Dylan does. All of these qualities are not only important to be a Teasley Tiger, but they're important for the world we live in. Dylan is very accomplished. She's in student council. She's been in student council since she was third grade. She is vice president of the student body. She's a member of our treble tones, which is our chorus. She's participating in the musical. She's part of Girls on the Run. She is in Rise Up. She is part of our art club, which is Art for the Heart. And then she's also a very accomplished gymnast outside of school. Dylan is quite busy. Dylan is a very accomplished 11-year-old and she has a heart of gold and anyone would be proud to have Dylan as their student. So, Dylan, it is my pleasure for you to be honored with the mayor's award.
Congratulations. Good luck, Terry. Make sure these gift cards go to the appropriate people.
I promise I will.
We know how many are in there. They're numbered. Campbell Middle. Jonathan Tanner. I'm glad that AC guy got here and got that air conditioner. He's right on. Going to smack somebody around as soon as this meets over. Hey, Jonathan. Good to see you. Thank you, Mayor Bacon.
So, I have three phenomenal individuals that I'll be recognizing tonight from Campbell Middle School. It's a great honor to be able to recognize these three fantastic people, starting with our student, eighth grader Shelby Mendez. I do have some notes because once I read this, you'll see exactly why we're recognizing her for all the things that she's a part of. She was a part of founding Campbell Middle School Newspaper. She's worked with the Outdoor Adventure Club. She's been a part of National Junior Honor Society. She was a part of the National History Day competition. And last year, they actually went on to state with that competition. She was, again, a part of Math Bowl, part of Sources of Strength because she's committed to helping other people. She's also the vice president of National Junior Beta Club, president of the National Junior Honor Society. She participated in the Science Olympiad team, who went to state also. And she has also been, in addition to all that, a part of band for three years. And they just got back from Disney, which is why she's so tan. I'm sure she was out there in all that sun. She also plays soccer and swims during the summer. And all that says a lot about Shelby, but what truly says everything about her is her spirit of giving to others and that smile that's always on her face and just the most pleasant demeanor that you can imagine. She always greets everyone and truly cares about those around her and wants to make a better world. So, thank you, Ms. Mendez, for all that you're doing to represent our school. Next, we have Ms. Chandra Nelson. She is one of our PTSA presidents, co-presidents. And all of you know, there's those handful of people that are really the most important people in the building in a lot of ways because they make everything happen. And Ms. Nelson is one of those people. But in addition to organizing all those events and working all those events, including Spartan Academy on Saturdays where she has to get up and sell goods to the students and supply fresh fruit to the students, she just does that with a spirit in which she never says no. It's, "How can we make that happen?", not, "No, that's just not possible." And she does that with a true enthusiasm for our school. So, thank you, Ms. Nelson, for all that you've done to make Campbell Middle School a better place.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
And then finally, from our staff, we have Ms. Loki. Did write a few things down because this one's a tough one because those of you, not because it's tough to recognize her, but tough because she is retiring this year. And she has truly made an impact, not just at Campbell Middle School, but across the district. She has not only educated Campbell Middle School students, but she's worked in several middle schools in the district. She's worked as a lead teacher and academic coach. And perhaps most, biggest impact is through her professional development in the district. I myself have sat in those professional development sessions and learned from her. And anyone that has come to the building on one of the tours, that's one of the classes I always go to because she is definitely the model for enthusiasm for teaching. If you know me, you know my father was a principal. And one of the things he always said to me was, "You know a quality teacher when they never stop learning." And despite the fact that this is a master teacher who won Cobb County School District Teacher of the Year in 2014, yes, that says a lot. She also was a finalist for the state with that as well. But despite all that, she never stops looking for new strategies, new ways to engage her students. And the most fun times I've had at Campbell Middle have been in this woman's classroom. So, thank you for all that you've done for our school and for the entire district of Cobb County. Thank you, Ms. Loki.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. Good job. There she's achieved the highest award, mayor's award. Griffin Middle, Paul Gillahan, is he here? Where'd he go? He's sort of a big guy, redheaded. Oh, there you are.
Why are you picking on me? Thank you, Mayor Bacon, council. You were asking a while ago about how long. It's 10 years you've been doing this because I was a teacher at Campbell High School 10 years ago. So, it's my pleasure as principal of Griffin Middle School to honor three fabulous people. This one right here, we just spent three days in Savannah together with 66 other kids and some chaperones and had a wonderful time. But the reason his teachers nominated him was, as Mr. Scotchless put it, was his energy, his enthusiasm and his constant smile. Also, his determination never to give up. He always is going to do what he can to succeed. And with his attitude, on the trip, you would see him smiling and jumping and running when it was appropriate. And when it wasn't, he was listening and paying attention to everything that was going on. So, Ian White is our student nominee for the award and we are so proud of him. He will be going on next year as an eighth grader, moving on. But we wish we could clone you and have some more. My fondest memory of Ian is in our first African-American History Month presentation. He played the president and I will have that in my memory forever. So, Ian, we're so proud of you. Okay, this next lady. This is Ms. Kim Stanek. And you know, as everyone said about your volunteers and everything, and I can look out through here in the room and I see some more of my parents, some volunteers down here. And every time I call, they always answer. And Kim is no exception to that. And today, she was in my office and we were talking about some things. I said, "Kim, I want you to teach a class next year for our parents and for our teachers." And she's like, "Okay." What is it? Bargain shopping. And she's going to. We've already started going through it because Kim can find the bargain anywhere in the metro Atlanta area. She's going to find it. And so, she has been helping our PTSA And so she has been helping our PTSA through the shopping area and also organizing things for us. She goes above and beyond. Next year, she's going to serve on our foundation as secretary, I think it is. Yeah, her husband's going to be president. He's out there. So Ms. Stanek, I appreciate everything you do. I appreciate your willingness to serve and just coming in with a positive attitude and saying, "We'll find a way. We'll find a way." So thank you for that. I really do appreciate it. Kim Stanek.
Congratulations.
Now for my teacher. And I think Jonathan summed it up, or Jonathan's dad did, said, "When you talk about a good teacher, you know them because they keep on learning and keep on learning." I knew I had a great teacher when I got Ms. Amelia Carmichael. And she is, she's phenomenal. We have a greenhouse now, thanks to Amelia and her dad and some others in the community helping get it moved over and everything. She started our garden club. Our kids are learning how to plant things and grow things. What struck me was when we had a caterpillar problem in my oak trees in the back and I was panicking because we can't do anything about it and they were killing my oak trees. So Amelia has a friend who works for Northwestern Exterminating. So she calls, she's ELA teacher. This is science. She makes a connection. She has the person come out. She gets the science teacher, Mr. Gilli. They take their kids out there. They get a lesson in what causes the caterpillars to do what they're doing and how to stop it environmentally friendly. And then they go back and they write about it. And so she sees things, real-life things, at our school and incorporates them in her class. And I love Amelia and you're wonderful.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. I wonder where those caterpillars really are. Who's next? Kamalasko, Dr. Jean Walker. Patty Songy the other day.
How are you? Good evening. At this time, I'd like to ask our student recipient to come up front with me. Tonight, we're recognizing Kyle Ganarawal. Have to practice that name multiple times. Kyle is a senior at Campbell High School. He's in our International Baccalaureate Program. He's on the swim team. He's in National Honor Society, on the IB Leadership Team, on my principal's Student Advisory Team. And he was named one of the top seniors as a who's-who recipient just recently. He's a wonderful example of everything that's great at Campbell High School. He is smart, very talented, and very respectful, just a model citizen in the school. He has a 4.50 GPA and will graduate in the top 10%. If you can believe it, that's top 10% of our senior class. And Kyle will be continuing on at University?
Of Georgia.
Of Georgia. I thought so. Yeah, that's right. Go Dogs! I forgot my red tonight. So Kyle is also a wonderful salesman. If you ask Mr. Pennick, he will tell you that Kyle is one of his chief spokespeople, persons for the IB Magnet Program. He often goes out into the community and eloquently articulates about the great program we have at Campbell High School and is very persuasive in his efforts to get additional students into the program. Probably one of the reasons why we have the largest class ever entering Campbell High School's International Baccalaureate Program in the fall. So thank you, Kyle. We appreciate everything you do.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to ask our staff recipient to come to the front at this time. Tonight, we're recognizing Ms. Crystal Kidd. She is an IB English teacher at Campbell High School. I call her our Energizer Bunny. Wears me out just to watch her in action. She's also, it's funny, I was describing in front of us, Assembly, Ms. Kidd, and the students knew it before I even finished my description of her because I said she's the chief decorator. And especially, her talents are seen when we have homecoming and hoopcoming and the way she transforms our hallways and cafeteria into a dance venue is just remarkable. I think one of the other actions that she participates in that makes us think so highly of her is she is the one woman behind our Habitat for Humanities efforts. How many builds have you been a part of now, Ms. Kidd?
Seven.
Seven builds. Had the opportunity to go over and see them in action one Saturday recently. And the work that she leads these students in transforming the lives of people in our community and we just respect and appreciate her so much. And it's so important that she teaches students not only to give back by participating in Habitat for Humanity to fundraise. This year, they've raised over $8,000 to contribute to the build. But also, she teaches them life skills, like how to use a hammer, how to use power tools and all those kinds of things. But Ms. Kidd is so well-loved by the school. When we announced her as the recipient of this award, there were just thunderous applause because she is just a dynamo in the classroom and really engages our students in very rigorous educational experiences. So thank you, Ms. Kidd. And at this time, I'd like to invite our parent volunteer to the front. I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Aretha Holmes. She is our Parent Volunteer of the Year. Ms. Holmes has worked in the Smyrna community for over 20 years, both in the schools and in the community through her church and in the Milford Softball Program. She has raised three children who have come through all the Smyrna schools, well, not all of the elementary, obvious, but through the Smyrna schools. And she has volunteered in each of those schools through the PTSA and especially in the booster and sports programs at Campbell High School. She's been president of the football booster program, the girls' basketball program. She's been the softball program team mom and heads softball and basketball concessions. I think that's it. She is there at least 20 hours a week and has done that for, as I said, over 20 years. She really takes a load off the shoulders of our coaches in terms of fundraising and keeping those programs going so they can focus on building the best athletic programs. And she just does it from, out of her heart. I mean, she isn't looking for the credit, but guess what? We did recognize her as our volunteer of the year at the school and she was recognized as the High School Volunteer of the Year for Cobb County Schools. So Ms. Holmes, we salute you for all you do to contribute to our community.
Thank you, Dr. Walker. Kyle, good luck on keeping that 4.5 average at University of Georgia when you get up there. It's a little different up there. 4.5, it's different, I'm telling you. Covenant Christian School, Randall Ball. See here? Yep. I'm just joking about this. It's not a party school up there.
First of all, I'd like to have my people come forward. Mayor, Council, again, thank you so much for this opportunity to recognize those who learn, serve, and teach well. We sure appreciate this. Actually, tonight, I want to start with Mr. Hudson, our teacher. So Mr. Hudson, you come over here beside me. You don't need to be afraid of anything. But anyway, Mr. Hudson is our seventh and eighth-grade language arts teacher. He's been at CCS Covenant Christian School since 2005. Mr. Hudson has a Master of Fine Arts in Acting. You know, that comes in very handy for teaching, doesn't it? But anyway, what I want to do here, I actually want to read a quote from a previous reference from a previous school that he was at. The reason I want to read this quote is because I could not say this any better than the way it's written here. "Mr. Hudson, instinctive ability to connect with children, able to gain the trust and confidence of a wide variety of students without compromising their respect for him and for the position." That statement is absolutely true. Mr. Hudson exhibits that in every single way. You know, however you define what a master teacher is, and that's a word that we use quite often, an education master teacher, he certainly represents all of that and the criteria that we associate with being a master teacher. So Mr. Hudson, this award is well-deserved. Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Next, I would like to recognize Mrs. Connie Cameron. And a few things about Mrs. Cameron. I met Connie back in 2008 when I was first starting at Covenant and she was the PTF President. And after closely watching her in her role, her creativity, her organization, her work ethic, I thought, you know, one day I'm going to have her working in the office with me. Well, that opportunity came in 2011 and I tell you, I jumped on it. Though she is not officially employed now, I can tell you that she is the consummate volunteer. Actually, has been a member of Junior League since 1988. And on her resume, she included this statement. "Being a member of this organization has taught me the skills to be a professional volunteer," and she is one in every way. One of the things that, the school a few years ago went through the advanced ed accreditation. And I'll tell you, I could not have made it without Connie. I mean, she had that all organized, all those files organized, and she's really the one that made it happen. So it is a privilege this evening to nominate you for this award.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Now, the student. Ms. Cameron Jones. Cameron is an eighth grader, been at Covenant since 2004. Cameron this year was the president of student government. And I want to read a few things that her teachers have had to say about her and also her student government sponsor. One of the reasons that I had these two come up first is because I have two statements from them about her. And so I thought that would make it more meaningful coming from them. Here's what Mr. Steve Hudson says about you, Cameron. "Cameron is among the most teachable students I have ever had. She works hard to see that her work is done thoroughly and thoughtfully." Another teacher, Mrs. Cynthia Ray says, "She will do what is asked of her when it is asked of her without complaining and she will do it excellently." And finally, student government sponsor, Mrs. Cameron, here's what she says about you. "She is responsible and diligent, fulfills her obligations." So listen, where are you going to school at next year?
Holy Innocents Episcopal.
Holy Innocents Episcopal. Okay, well, I'll tell you what, they will be receiving a fine young lady. And you know, it's been a privilege to have had you with us these years and we wish you the best. And I know that you'll be missed at the school at CCS. So you are certainly worthy of the Mayor's Education Award.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. International School, I'm sorry, International Academy. Case Rock, the principal, I saw her somewhere. Everybody stays, we got blizzards outside as you leave. They're Reese's, chocolate blizzards.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor and City Council, for including us in this wonderful event. It's one of my favorite opportunities of the year to celebrate all the hard work and wonderful people that make IAS what it truly is. First, oh my goodness, where do I begin? Kelsey Wilson is an eighth grader who started with us in our inaugural kindergarten class. She will be among a very few, I think there might be eight, that have stayed with us from when school opened in kindergarten and are now finishing with us in eighth grade as this is our ninth year of being opened. So that's remarkable. She's seen quite a bit of the changes and she's been a part of instituting some of those changes this year. She is a member of Junior Beta. She is our student body president and has served this year on the inaugural team of student ambassadors and the student-led tours that go through the building when we have guests come to see who we are and what we're all about. In the classroom and with her peers, she is a genuine friend, team player, committed to doing excellent work. And I think all of the leadership and maturity that she exudes, what struck me most is that from her teachers indicated that she still just exudes the joy of being a child. And I know that that's not the best word to use, but they're children and she still enjoys being a student and hasn't allowed all of the pressure and everything to get to her. So thank you for what you bring every day and congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Bacon.
Good luck.
Next, our teacher, Ms. Kaylee Ramsey, ensuring that her name is pronounced correctly because she was afraid that it wouldn't be. She is in our, her third year with us and serves on the first grade team. A testament to who she is as a professional and an individual is that most of her team is with her tonight to celebrate her. Yay! She is collaborative, team player extraordinaire. Even when, like the calm of a duck above the water, her feet are just a-scootin' underneath, you never know it. She is always willing to help in any way that is needed. She took on a little bit of an extra challenge with a group of students this year and really rose to the occasion, all while working on her advanced degree. And I just learned that she was doubling up on all of that this evening. So definitely a force to be reckoned with in the classroom. I've seen her grow so much in the three years that we've been together and I'm just so glad to be able to celebrate her tonight.
Congratulations.
Oh, Ms. Austin. Ladina Austin is a mom who's been with us for two years. Her youngest is a first grader at IAS, joined us last year in kindergarten. And if, I think she keeps a lot of it back, all the plates that she spins, but when she is also a force to be reckoned with. She has become our Scholastic Book Fair Wizard. She transforms a very small space into a very exciting place for students to come and buy books twice a year. She talked me into that. She has also jumped in on our annual event that we do each spring, the Spring Gala, which is intended to be a school-wide fundraiser and basically a party. And who doesn't like a good party, right? So she's amazing. She never says no. She's always available. And she's one who has gotten, she's tricked me to make me think that it was my idea and behind the scenes, she's, yes! So I just so appreciate your energy and your ideas and your creativity and I'm glad that we're going to get to keep you for a lot more years.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Whitfield Academy, Jeannie Brostrand.
Good evening. My name is Jeannie Brostrand. And I'm the lower school principal at Whitfield Academy. And while I did have some input on these individuals standing up here, our entire administrative leadership team selects these individuals. So congratulations. And while typically this award goes to one of our seniors, we could not wait to award this to Bailey Koenig. So congratulations. And a few things about her. She actually embodies the mission statement of Whitfield Academy. And she carries a GPA of 3.82. She has served faithfully on our Ecuador Mission trip for the last several years and was chosen to receive a certain amount of funding for her service project to this Ecuador Mission trip. So we're so proud of you for that, Bailey. She also received the Gold Key Award for her photography and her work is going on to be judged at the national level. She works at her children's ministry at her church. She started a prayer group for our faculty and staff and the list goes on and on. It is such a pleasure to award you the Mayor's Award. Congratulations, Bailey.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And next, we have Michelle Marriott, a longtime Smyrna gal. Michelle and I have worked together for 14 years from day one of our lower school at Whitfield. She has taught first grade for 13 years. And if you Google "The Perfect" And next, we have Michelle Marriott, a longtime Smyrna gal. Michelle and I have worked together for fourteen years, from day one of our lower school at Whitfield. She has taught first grade for thirteen years. And if you Google "the perfect first grade teacher," guess whose picture will appear? It would be Michelle Marriott. If you have one teacher that you remember throughout all your years, it would be her. I could tell you so many things about her. She has received the Barnum &amp; Ross Teaching Award for Excellence. Our yearbook, pre-K through 12th grade, was dedicated to her. She is not only a teacher, but she is also the director of our lower school academics and serves in the capacity of curriculum on our instructional leadership team for the whole school. She is the department chair for pre-K through first grade. She coordinates all of our off-campus academic competitions. She is a mentor to new teachers. Everyone wants to visit her classroom to pick up tips. She is kind, selfless in her giving of her expertise and her time. She is everybody's dream first grade teacher. It gives me great pleasure to award you the Mayor's Award.
Congratulations.
Get on up here, Mrs. Bassing. This is Rachel Bassing. If we had to put her on the payroll, we could not afford her. She is our lower school co-Vice President for the last two years. We just had our last meeting today, and I'll tell you what, we shed some tears. It's hard to give her up, but she's going to be around. She has two adorable boys who are both in our lower school, and a husband who honestly, if he were not so understanding, I don't think you could do the job that you do. Anyhow, she works admission events and you name it. She is the person in charge of all our chairs, of our committees, from Grandparents' Day to Donuts with Dads, Sweetheart Ball, Mother-Son Event, Fine Arts Day, Field Day, Mileage Club, whenever the doors of the school are open, Rachel is there. She is the most dedicated, hard-working, selfless, endless energy. I don't know where she gets it, but she's like an ever-ready bunny battery, whatever. She just, whatever that saying is, she is it. She just never runs out of steam. She is amazing, and I've had the pleasure of working so closely with her, monthly meetings, heads up all the committees. She's made my job a lot easier, and I am eternally grateful to you for your volunteerism. Thank you, Michelle. Michelle, Rachel. I looked at Michelle.
Sounds like she's been toting your water for several years. It's all these volunteers. I'm gonna get Chris Rags to come up while they're getting the blizzards ready on the spring robe. Chris?
Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thanks for all you guys do. In recognition, you know, the Volunteer of the Year luncheon, just a small way that as a district, we can recognize all of our Volunteers of the Year. I usually always tell the same story. My grandfather was a POW in World War II. They call that the greatest generation for a reason. I know Max, your mom and dad both were of that generation. And, you know, when you think of the term volunteer, it should mean something special, and it certainly does to me because that's what I think of. And, you know, it's easy for all of us, regardless of what position we're in, to take things for granted, that you become so accustomed to something, so accustomed to a person, that you start taking things for granted. And we certainly do not want to take our volunteers for granted. It's our vision in Cobb County School District, one team, one goal, student success. And it takes each and every one of our team members to see that student success. As we get to this time of year at graduation, we get to watch our seniors walk across the stage, but it's the culmination of twelve, thirteen years, if you're in kindergarten at the most, so we can walk across the stage and see that student's success come to fruition. And the volunteers are a vitally important member of our team. And so it's just a small way that we can recognize the Volunteers of the Year, and I appreciate what you guys do as well, because it truly takes our entire team. And certainly, the teachers that were recognized as well, the staff members, it takes our entire team to reach success. But volunteers are a vitally important part of our team. I know Susan Thayer, our board chair is here, and she was also at the Volunteer of the Year Luncheon and would also recognize those volunteers. And sorry, Max, but I've just volunteered her to talk, but, you know. Exactly. Our Chair of the Board of Education, Susan Thayer.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for these awards. We really appreciate it. We know that our community is stronger because of the outstanding schools we have, and our schools are stronger because of the outstanding support that we receive from our community. So we sincerely appreciate that and everything that you do for us. Thank you, volunteers. We certainly couldn't do it without you. Mr. Ragsdale was commenting on the Volunteer Luncheon of the Year. There were four awards given, one for elementary, middle, and high school, and then one at large. Of those four awards, two from our community received those, Ms. Stanek from Griffin and Ms. Holmes from Campbell High School. So we really, really appreciate all their work, and again, to all of our volunteers, we thank you so much. To our teachers and to our principals, thank you all. You are what make the difference in our community. So thank you, and thank you, Max.
Thank y'all. Congratulations again to the winners. Kristy Ullman, and who else helped do this? Heather. Kristy's the brain. She's half my brain. She knows the answers. Thank y'all so much for doing this. Thanks for the council meeting. It's 6:45, we got a meeting at seven. So thank y'all again for showing up, and there's free margaritas outside whenever you...
This is your jam. Right here. Sorry.
Everything's picked up, there was one...